Before we get into the fun part with the budget, I just wanted to quickly introduce our new superintendent, Kimberly Halterman, as the valedictorian of the class of 1997 from Allegheny High School. And we're super excited to have a product of our school system lead us as we merge towards this change. So I'll give the mic to Kim for a second.
Thank you so much. It's truly an honor to be here in this position and to be here with you all tonight. Really appreciate the hard work of this community, and it's such an honor to be able to give back to a community that gave so much to me. So truly, truly an honor to serve with everyone as we all work through, you know, the next opportunities in our community. Would be remiss to not say thank you to the folks who've carried the school division forward in this interim time. Really appreciate the hard work of Sherman Callahan, and Kevin Rice, and Fred Vaughn, and lots of people who moved us forward day to day, and that I get to reap the benefits of their good work. So I really appreciate that. Look forward to working with all the entities gathered here. Have enjoyed renewing some connections this week. It's been wonderful to be here with everybody. And thank you for the gracious opportunity to put this down about our needs tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rice.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Gartner, Chairman Wright, Mr. Landry, Mrs. Halterman, members of the boards. I am here this evening to present to you our budget to meet a statutory requirement to have that to you by April 1st. The budget we're presenting tonight is based on the governor's proposed budget, so it's not our final budget. And we'll be back to you representing some additional information in the future. We do have our final draft budget prepared, but our school board has not seen that as of yet, so not prepared to discuss that this evening until they have a chance to. So we're going to roll through this pretty quick. Please interrupt me if you have questions, and we'll try to get you out of here at a decent time and not bore you with details. But again, this is the governor's, based on the governor's proposed funding. It includes a membership, an average daily membership of 1,815 students, which is a reduction of 46 from our current budget. In the governor's proposed budget, we do have an extra $274,552 in state funding net of pass-throughs. $163,000 of that is dedicated to a 2% one-time bonus, which must be provided in order to receive that $163,000. And we do have the option of doing a pay increase, which was incorporated into this budget. We also have a minimum wage increase to $9.50 per hour. The minimum wage goes to that effective May 1st. And since the governor's budget and with the final general assembly budget, they did not push back the effective date of $11 an hour on January 1st, 2022. So our final budget will have to incorporate that as well. This budget does include a one-step plus a 2.25% increase to staff. As I mentioned earlier, incorporates a $9.50 per hour minimum wage, which does affect some of our salary scales and miscellaneous wages. We had good news this year on the health insurance front. We received a 2% decrease last year. We're receiving a 4% decrease this year. So that benefits both the employees and the school board through our allotment based on percentages. So that definitely helps us out. We have restored degree supplements and other job-related supplements, so that the Virginia Retirement System pension is calculated on those supplements. That was eliminated back during the Great Recession in a money-saving venture. And by doing this, not only does it help our employees out, but it aligns us with the practice of Covington City Public Schools, which will be one less hurdle we have to overcome during consolidation. So that's a positive in several ways. We propose adding a new teacher and a new teacher assistant position at Callahan Elementary due to larger class sizes there. And we risk losing certain types of categories of funding if we do not maintain our pupil-teacher ratio in grades K through 3 at a lower level. And we do have, through attrition, we do have an offset for each of those positions, so there's no net increase in staff. And we also propose to restore funding for the school bus purchase line. It's been cut over the years in response to budget challenges and would enable us to purchase two school buses per year. The Commonwealth of Virginia's guidelines require that we purchase two and a half one-year, three another year to maintain the 15-year replacement cycle that they recommend. The next page just gives you a brief budget history and provide that every year, some statistics related to our composite index, which by the way, will remain the same this year. It does change next year with the re-benchmarking for the new biennium. And so you just see some basic statistics with staffing levels, what our total budget was, what the Board of Supervisors' financial effort has been for us, which has been pretty darn steady over the years, as you can see. And just a little information there. The next page compares our teacher salaries with our index group and our proximity group. Our index group are schools that are similar to us in rural nature, similar in size. Our proximity group are the divisions that are close to us that we actually compete with. And you can see how we rank in our, both our entry level and our top of the scale. And we generally will fall in the middle typically. And I don't know how to project, since we don't have information from the other school divisions, as to what they're doing with their salary scales for next year. I provided what we would be at in this budget, which gives you a little more information and helps us compare more favorably based on what the other divisions do. So we've done fairly well there. The state budget timeline for the second year in a row has been askew. We are late getting our final state funding numbers out from Richmond due to the late General Assembly and the special sessions they've had this year. So that delayed us in being able to develop a final budget. We received those on March 9th, I believe, and have been working diligently since then to incorporate those changes from the General Assembly. Moving to the next page, we're in on our anticipated revenues, and you have what our current budget is for this fiscal year, and that's based on the veto budget from the General Assembly that came out after their initial funding resolutions back in March of last year. And subsequent to that, as your staff here at the county knows, that funding got redone due to the COVID-19 impact. So we were really late. We were in June before we approved our amended budget based on those funding levels. So again, the composite index stays the same, and there is an error there. I see that this shows the 1861 on the governor's instead of the 1815. I apologize for that, but the dollars are based on the 1815. And so we net out, I'm not going to read all these lines to you, we net out to slightly less in our state SOQ funding, but when you consider 46 less students, that's pretty good. On the next page, the items highlighted in yellow are pass-throughs where we either serve as the fiscal agent or transfer these funds, such as meal-related costs. Revenues go to the cafeteria fund, the academic governor school. We serve as the fiscal agent, so we pass those monies to those entities, and they do not help us on our bottom line, but we have to incorporate them in our budget for appropriation purposes. So anyway, one of the new items you'll see in the first category under incentives programs is the bonus payment of $163,000. Again, if we don't provide a 2% bonus or a salary increase, we forfeit that $163,000. And again, I'm not going to read all this to you. You can compare the two side by side. Our lottery-funded programs are fairly consistent. We did see some increase in those, and that varies from year to year. We are showing an increase in our special education regional tuition revenue that we anticipate due to our experience in that so far. That's been kind of an iffy funding source, but we feel confident we can do that. The next page is other state funds that we received. The National Board Certification Bonus, and we turn around and provide that to the qualified teachers. The VTSS grant, which provides training for teachers, and it also, it's a reimbursable grant, so it's dollars in, dollars out. And that will cover also the cost of substitutes for teachers that may attend these programs. And then Medicaid reimbursement. We have increased our anticipated receipt of that by $30,000 based on our trends of the last few years. There's been concern about the ongoing viability of the Medicaid reimbursement, but based on how we've done, we feel confident in that. And on the next page is just a summary of our total state revenues. And you can see we've actually increased thanks to the governor's budget, and it's not even with the lower ADM. Any questions thus far?
On that page, categorical programs.
That would be, let's go back here. The categorical programs are school lunch funding. The state provides us a small amount of school lunch funding. The vast, vast majority comes from the federal government. And then special education homebound services. We receive some funding for those. Typically, our expenses are exceed funding. So that's what that is. You're welcome. Anything else? Okay, then the next page is anticipated federal revenues, and this will be one that's near and dear to Mr. Bennett's heart in here. We've not received any word on the Forest Reserve Secure Rural Schools reauthorization. For those of you who don't know, because Allegheny County is such a large portion of it is off the tax rolls because it's owned by the federal government, we get some funding, as does the county, based on that, pay in lieu of taxes. But some years ago, they tied the Secure Rural Schools program to that, where we would get additional funding for the schools. And that's iffy every couple of years, whether they reauthorize it or not. And there's not been any word on that that I can find, so we're showing on that particular category a decline in that funding from $121,792 to $24,792. And if they do restore it, it'll be late in the game, as it often is, and we'll learn that fairly at the last minute. We also include CARES money in here this time. There's $59,922 of CARES Act money. That is to cover the residual cost of MYFI's that we've provided. It's going to carry into the next fiscal year and to pay a portion of two of our nurses that we increased their time and duties related to COVID, and we're able to reimburse those additional costs with CARES money. So we'll take every little bit we can get. And then federal monies are typically reimbursable. We have to spend the money and then request reimbursement, so we budget an equivalent amount of revenues to expenditures. So if it changes and goes up, because you have multiple years you can draw from, we don't have a negative or a positive impact on the net budget because we budgeted the revenues equal to expenditures. And then the next, based on our conversations between our executive committees, we have budgeted level funding from the county. We thank you for that. Also our miscellaneous other expenses, which include things we service the payroll clerk, if you will, for the cafeteria fund. The bulk of that is where they reimburse us for us doing the payroll, but it also includes rentals of our facilities, sale of surplus property, interest earnings. And at one time, we had, we had $15,000 in there for damage fees and insurance fees for our Chromebook initiative. And when the COVID pandemic began, the state-informed divisions, they could not charge those fees, so we've taken that out of the budget, which resulted in a decline there of $15,000. So our anticipated revenues with all sources, state, federal, and local, is $27,111,511 adjusted for the pass-throughs. We have a working revenue, if you will, of $25,952,224, excuse me. Next page are the additional expenditures that are included in this budget. We listed items that were requested by administrators and other personnel in a division that were subsequently not funded due to constraints, but we list those for information. But we do plan to add the additional teacher and the teacher assistant position at Callahan, which I referenced earlier. Earlier, there was monies included for that. We've allotted an extra $9,440 for audiovisual needs with the ongoing pandemic and moves to Promethean Boards and things like that, and that provides us some extra funding for those. Our IT department, which are non-exempt employees, two of them, so they work overtime, and they've put in a lot lately, so we've increased that. Then the carryover into, of two months into next fiscal year for the MYFI expenditures, which is covered by CARES money, as I mentioned earlier. I mentioned earlier the BRS, paying BRS on advanced degrees and other supplements. That's included here. We've increased bus driver contracts from 181 to 182 days, which has become necessary as more and more training is required, and they drive for 180 days. So currently, they have one day to get all their training in, and that creates some challenges, so we've increased that. Then the cost of the one-step plus the 2.25% salary increase, $511,000 approximately. At the time this budget was prepared, we did not know who the superintendent would be, and so we hedged our bets a little bit and included an additional $20,000 in compensation, which is not going to be forthcoming in the final budget. The estimated impact to minimum wage going to $9.50, and that's just our operating fund. That does not include the cafeteria operation, which has had a major impact. That's had a major impact for them. On top of a year they've already struggled with declining revenues due to the pandemic. And then partial restoration of the school bus purchase allocation of approximately $110,000. So that's net, a net increase of $843,000. We net that to the positive variance in our revenues of $274,000, which gives us a net impact, a negative impact that we have to overcome of $568,719. And we're going to accomplish that on the next page, and I will not read all these to you. The biggest one is replacement benefit, and that is what we realize when we prepare our budget each year based on typically, this year I've been able to push it to March, but in years past, the employees that are approved and in place as of the February school board meeting, then that's what we budget off of. If we have people leave after that and they're replaced with lower people who are newer at a lower end of the scale or less benefits, we reap a gain for that, and we term that replacement benefit. And so $217,000 of it is that. Another big impact is 90, almost $92,000 in lower costs for the school board for contributions to health insurance costs. So again, that's a win for both the employee and the school board. The aforementioned reductions of one teacher and one teacher position offset the increases at Callahan. And some other miscellaneous items, we had upped our budget this year from $5,000 to $15,000 for unemployment insurance due to the COVID issues. Typically, in an average year, we'll run approximately $2,300 in an unemployment cost, but we do not participate in the insurance pool. This year, it's been much, much greater than that, and I'm sure for any of you who've had to deal with the issues with BEC, they've been a little bit overwhelming this year and confusing. So hopefully, we'll get some of that resolved in the next year, but we propose to reduce that back to our pre-COVID levels since we're coming around the corner. Gift and Kind for our Virginia preschool initiative program. It used to be you could count 25% of the required local match is gift and kind. They've increased that to 50, so that has a direct benefit to us. Anyway, once we incorporate all the expenditure reductions, we have a balanced budget of revenues equaling expenditures. And the next page is required by the code to provide you with the major categories, primarily on the expenditure side. This gives you a breakdown of the three classifications of revenue and the percentage of the total budget they occupy. And on the next page on expenditures, that gives you a breakdown of the classifications as we report on the annual school report to the state each year, and the percentage of our total expenditures that are occupied by those categories. And as you can see, the instruction is 65% when you're a rural division like us, and that's the standard the state expects us to achieve. But when you're a rural school division like us, and a larger portion of your operating expenses go to transportation, they go to building infrastructure, because we have more buildings spread out, we're at an inherent disadvantage to more urban school divisions in meeting that target. So that was an arbitrary number that was arrived at some years ago in Richmond. And we're coming down the home stretch here. The last pieces are just enrollment figures, give you a little comparison over the years by grade. I will say that Mr. Callahan and some of his counterparts in the instruction office over the years have done a much, much better job of being accurate in their estimate of our average daily membership than the numbers that are provided through the Commonwealth of Virginia as a result of their Weldon Cooper studies that they do. So thank goodness they've been accurate on that, because if we under-budget our enrollment, then we risk providing pay and benefit increases to our employees. And if we over-budget it, we have mid-year corrections if funding doesn't come in where you thought it was going to based on your average daily membership. So anyway, I won't belabor you with these totals. I will say that on page 24, in our total pupil-teacher ratio, core teachers next year is projected to be 18.2, which is very good and leads to better instruction. And I'm not a teacher, but I can understand that. And we've, the state is more and more providing funding incentives and encouragements to lower the pupil-teacher ratios in schools, and we've managed to do well in that over the years, as you can see. It will vary some years a little bit, but by and large, we've done very well in that regard. So that, in a nutshell, is the budget presentation to you. And again, it was presented to me, the statutory requirement, to have this to you by April 1st. It has to be something that's been approved by the school board prior to presentation to you, which it has been. And we'll be finalizing our final budget based on the final general assembly funding, which is more favorable, and have that done in the next week or so. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
How have you found the staff turnover? Have you been hiring? Have you had to hire teachers for the coming year?
We've, our turnover surprisingly has been pretty stable. Mr. Vaughn would answer that better than I, but we've had some retirements. We've had some illnesses that have led to departures. We've had, in our school board office, we've had some, percentage-wise, some significant turnover in retirements. And of course, we have a new superintendent. And you know, we lost Jeff Allman back in January unexpectedly, and that was a large void to fill. He is, in addition to being great with his job, he was one of the finest people you'd ever meet. And that was hard on all of us, but we've adapted to the change, and we weathered things about as well as you can so far, I think.
One thing you said, Kevin, something about part of the nurseless pay through the COVID. I see this COVID money the same as the whole harmless funding we got when we put the schools together. In other words, it's not coming back. This is the end of it. One down. And you can build yourself a cliff into this if you use very much of that money for something that's going to be a repetitive type expense. So I'm sure y'all understand that as well as anybody, but be real cautious.
That's why you see a small number there.
Be real cautious. I know some people in the private sector are getting themselves in trouble with these $2,000 bonuses. You make a down payment on a new car, we're good to do next month when the first payment comes due.
Well, one of the challenges we have is there are so many strings attached to funding, as Suzanne can tell you. And you can get yourself in trouble real quick if you are lackadaisical in how you interpret that. And so we've been very diligent in trying to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's on any of those funds. And you know, we've just received another large notification for the last round. And sometimes, you know, when we're having discussions in the school board office, you really wonder, you know, how are you going to spend it all with the strings that are attached? And there are still, you know, we get notifications from the state that, you know, schools have these large outstanding balances of unused funds, and that's a lot of it is because of what you're able to use money for. And it's, you know, I think what's going to happen is most of the, most of the uses of the funds that are fairly straightforward would be like improving air quality in your school. So we could use that to replace, you know, Mountain View Clifton Middle. Those units are over 20 years old, so they're to their life expectancy, so we could use money to replace those. But everybody else is going to be trying to do that too, so then you're going to have supply and demand issues.
You and I were there all the time we went through that, so you know what we're talking about. Just use it for one-time hits, just like we did when we were locked down to our composite index number. Don't make a cliff out of it, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, no, we're definitely in tune to not building in ongoing costs that you're not going to have the funding source to pay for later on. And that is part of the challenge. You know, eventually, I think you'll see us in some of our budget changes, you'll see some additional resources allocated to helping students recover from the learning loss or lack of learning in the past year. But that's done knowing that that's going to be a finite, short-term use of the money.
We've dealt with money like this before. When we went through the reversion, we understand how this type of influx of cash with a drop-off on it will affect you. I want to tell you, I think our school division did a very good job going through the reversion, Clifton Forge, and how we planned that money out and used it.
I was explaining to the superintendent that how that money helped us do a 5-point-whatever million-dollar renovation of the high school and the HVAC system and the lighting, and it didn't require the county to borrow money on our behalf of it briefly, but we were able to repay that back. So that reversion money was a large component of being able to do that, because we built it up over time.
No, it was always a separate, allow in for capital out, but...
Well, I thank you again for your time, and might get you home in time to eat dinner. Thank you.
Are there any further questions from Mr. Rice?
Anything else?
Any more questions for our school board? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
No, second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
Do we adjourn ours? We'll need to adjourn our meeting to, need a motion to adjourn to April, or just to adjourn. I just need a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Mr. Griffin?
Second.
Second by Ms. Vannersaw. Fall in favor?